Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board for Monday, February 4th, 2019. First matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for January 24th, 2019. Any of the board members have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I just have just a few little small things here. The motion to adjourn was seconded by Mr. Malovich. He was not present at the meeting, so I believe it was Mr. Guy's second that. And then, under the rezone, Phoenix Ave, we had speaking in favor and none speaking against. I don't know if that's the way it should be phrased. It was Nancy Pitkin, 26 Ravenly Ave. I don't see an issue to the rezone from light industrial to regional retail. I think all of us here tonight agree with that. So I'm not quite sure how that should be categorized, but probably not.
Yeah, because what happened was when I asked in favor, she didn't speak. When I asked in opposition, she did speak.
Yeah, so I don't know how.
From what I remember, no one came forward in favor. And then, when against, people came up and actually spoke in favor when they were.
So I'm not quite sure how we want to categorize that, but at least technically from the second motion to adjourn. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any additions or corrections? If not, can we have a motion to approve as amended, Mr. Fichette?
Yes, approved.
Now second it, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's carried. Minutes are approved as amended. Tonight, we do have a continued site plan and special permit, and we have another other business matters. But before we start that up, we want to take out of order the status update from our transportation engineer. If we could turn it over to our engineer.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a status update for 677 and 705 Potucket Boulevard, which is the Market Basket. It's an update to the traffic mitigation report at the request of the planning board when they approved the project. The statement was, "The board recommends that the city and applicant continue to work together towards the consideration of a roundabout with a status report from DPD in February of 2019." So we have continued to meet with the applicant, their engineer, VHB, and to a certain extent, the peer reviewer as well, with the city engineer and myself. We are moving forward with the -- VHB is moving forward with the design of the roundabout. They had two potential options for where the roundabout would be relocated or would be located. The first one, the board has seen, it's, you know, was, but it, that, there are a couple of potential problems, not things that would necessarily derail it, but could create a little bit of an issue. It's a little bit close to the condo, where it could impact their buffer. And then, one of the houses on Varnum Avenue, a portion of the, it's extremely close to the city right of way, so using the standard leg length for the approach could come very close to the road. That's a fairly simple thing to fix if we just shorten, if the city allows the leg approach to be shortened, which that seems reasonable. VHB did identify a preferable location for the roundabout, but it would impact some transmission lines, so it literally just sort of shifts it away from the condos and sort of toward the city property, and it actually improves the functioning of the roundabout, so it would be a better location. The problem is that we would have to get National Grid to be okay with us relocating those transmission lines. So we're in the process of talking to National Grid about that and trying to get an estimate. The city engineer met with a National Grid representative onsite. They were of the, in the, of the opinion that the transmission lines were movable and that it would not be a terribly expensive proposition. That would be a cost borne by Market Basket themselves and would not be reimbursable because it's not really required, whereas the rest of the utility relocation, which if it's required because of our city project, it's typically reimbursable. So at the moment, we're just, VHB is continuing to move forward with the design of the roundabout, and it's, when we get an answer from National Grid regarding moving that those transmission lines, we'll know if it's, if we're going to go with that more, slightly more preferable location or the location that you all have already seen.
Natasha, just a question. Any, and I think National Grid moves at their own pace, but any idea of what you think of timelines?
Well, we're very hopeful that they will be quick. Apparently, Market Basket is a very big user for National Grid, and they have a liaison who is in contact, so Market Basket themselves has a liaison to National Grid, so they are trying to help us, help VHB get an answer on that. We are anticipating we need an answer very quickly in order for the plans to be finalized and go out to bid so that the project, the roundabout, can be built in, yeah, before the Market Basket opens. And I don't have an update on the MOU between the city and Market Basket. I know that there's a draft MOU and they're working out the details, but I don't, I don't know the details of that. So basically, we're just hoping as soon as possible.
Can we expect to get periodic uptake?
Yeah, I think certainly if, yes, I think as soon as we know which roundabout location they're going to go with, I can certainly just send another member to the board and come back and let you know. Yeah, happy to do that.
Any other board members have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, our next matter is a site plan review and special permit on 42 Highland Street. This matter was continued from our last meeting on January 24th, 2019. An application was submitted by Southern End Realty seeking site plan review and two special permits to construct two duplexes behind the existing structure in the traditional neighborhood multi-family zoning district. The proposed project requires a site plan review under Section 11.4 because of the proposal of four residential units and a special permit under the table of uses. Article 10, section, excuse me, Article 12, Section 12.1D, project also requires special permit under Section 6.7 for driveway that exceeds 200 linear feet and request from the zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Limplex Engineering and Surveying here on behalf of Southern End Realty. For a continued meeting that we had two weeks ago, and at that meeting, we essentially had three primary goals. First and foremost was to arrange for a site meeting with Southern End Realty and the direct abutters to understand the abutters' needs relative to the existing trees that are along the property line, as well as addressing some of the architectural elements of the, you know, the rear of the building that's going to be viewed from their residence. Secondly, was to get clarification from the fire department as to the fire chief's approval of the access drive. And then, thirdly, to make sure that the sewer department was okay with their recommendations related to modifications to the drainage system. I know that the Hermers are here, so I'm going to give them a copy of a street view So a site walk or a site meeting took place with the Hermer residents here relative to the access drive in these existing trees down the, down the property line. And it's been agreed that we're not going to cut any of the trees adjacent to the property and that the drive won't be affected by these existing trees, you know, relative to the widening. We're going to do a small widening to the side of the pavement of that existing drive. The, so that was the first thing and foremost, is to protect the trees. Secondly. I apologize for not having these on larger formats here, but I've handed out one of these to each of the board members. I'm going to run through the relative architectural changes to the building that was discussed at that meeting as well. So if you notice, the design from the rear of the building here, from the previous design, what we've done is taken those windows and we've separated them and made them more elongated. So that provides a better effect for those window casements on the rear of the building. The second thing is we've added some, some of those gooseneck lights on the, on the back gable here, which is similar to what's on the front of the building. We've installed, we've shown some proposed molding that'll go in underneath the cornice of the roofline here. We've also have on this second story, instead of them being similar window sets that were on the first story, we've separated those windows as well. We've also have added a, you know, a false widow's walk, similar to the McDonough Building, which is down the street. That will not be accessible. It'll just be a false architectural element to the building. And we've also have added some posts here as an additional architectural element to the rear here. And we added some landscaping as well to the rear. And then that also changes the front elevation a little bit with the additional architectural elements on the roofline. We have received an email from the wastewater, which had no more further concerns relative to the drainage. We've also have a confirmation email from the fire chief that he had no concerns with the access drive from a public safety standpoint. And again, I'll reiterate that we've incorporated sprinklers to the buildings, and we also have a fire hydrant at the, at the end of the access drive as well. And I can take any questions from the board.
Hold up, we'll give you one second, okay? At this point in time, we'll turn it over to the public. If anybody wants to speak in favor or have questions, just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Hello, everybody. Hi, my name is Scott, and I'm, I'm an abutter of the abutter, so I'm.
Will you just have your last name, please, Scott?
It's DeRosh, DeRosh, yep. So when I'm looking at the picture here, this is, when I look at it, it looks like the front and the back of one building, right? But your proposal is to put two of these structures behind the historic house that's there now, right?
That's correct.
So that's a lot of property. So I guess my, my concern was, I think you're taking what's historic property, which had, there used to be an old carriage house in the back, and what you're doing is you're taking a beautiful historic home, and I have no problem with, you know, maybe putting a, you know, another carriage house back there or a garage, maybe with a studio or a single family, but you're almost making a street out of a driveway. So I'm, I don't know, I just think it's alarming to see so much development in a historic zone property. Usually, when you buy a historic property, you have to stay within, you know, the rights of the city as far as the look and the feel of the property. But it, to me, it just seems like when you're going from a two unit to a six, you're taking what's a driveway and you're making it into a street. So I have all kinds of concerns about, you know, water runoff, extra parkings. It's just, it's just concerning to me as a, I mean, I don't, I don't live at the property. It's a rental of mine, so I've, I've been there 22 years. So it's just, I don't even know where you're going to get the cars back there as far as, you know, extra people, extra visitors. It's just, there's a lot. I mean, I've seen what you're trying to do, and it's just, I wish you had more land to do with what you're trying to do, because it really is, to me, is, it's really overkill for that, for that area. And again, I get, I get groundwater runoff. Where I live in Northborough, even if you put, if you put a swimming pool in, you have to be very careful about, about runoff. So all that water, because you've got all those, if they're 2,200 square foot roofs times two, you're talking about a lot of additional runoff, and that's all coming to me. So, I don't know, I just, I think there's a lot, there's a lot here to do, especially you've got extremely narrow driveway. And if you look at the pictures, all the greenery around the property is there, not the case at all. If you look at the direct abutter and you look at the two, you know, brick buildings that they've put in there, you know, it's a shame what happened back in the 70s and 80s with that property, you know? So I just feel like you're doing too much within too much. Highland Street is a beautiful street. There's seven homes there. Like I said, I've been there almost 25 years, and I don't know, I think this is way overkill. Something like this, take it, take it out to Chelmsford or take it out, you know, a little bit further away, but we've got too much going on in this, in that area right now. The One Deck Exchange is a perfect example. But I still have other questions. I just wanted to, you know, bring up some of the, some of the things. I mean, just turning around back there, all those headlights are going to be pointed all in our backyard. Since 1865, when my house was born, there's never been that much activity back, back in those woods. It's taken the only little bit of woods that's on Highland Street away from us. And again, if it was a carriage house, you know, with, with a, with a single family above or something, I just think putting four units back there on such a small parcel is just overkill. But again, I can take questions, too. I have a lot of thoughts about, I look at the pictures and with all the, there's no more green. I mean, you're taking, you're basically taking that lot that's in the back, and you're, what's green back there now is 50% tar and about 30% roof. So all that green, I don't see any green anymore. So, I don't know. That's just my, my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Hello there, I'm Rowena Hermer. I live at 48 Highland. So I do have to say that, you know, as our neighbor Scott voice, those are all of our concerns, too. Some, you know, very congested construction for the size of lot that it is. With that being said, I do appreciate Mr. Gorman. He did work with us, he talked to us, and he did agree. We made some pretty valid points about those two big trees. There's a, there's some very specific reasons for those staying that will impact the other trees along that line there that are buffered from the wind and the elements. It's really critical that those bigger trees stay, you know, not only for other environmental reasons, but he did work with us regarding the proportions and changing some of the architectural elements that look too institutional for a private neighborhood, and he did agree to change some of those. And I, I think that that makes a huge improvement in the look of the properties, especially the back side of the property, so I do appreciate that. And we had some concerns about the runoff as well. We also had some concerns about the lighting, that there wouldn't be too much of it and it would be downward directed. And my question is, is how, exactly how legally binding is any of this? From what I've heard from other people that have attended these hearings, that quite often, the case is that the structures that are presented at the hearings are not even the ones that end up being built. So I just would like to know, you know, what legal recourse do we have if actually none of this happens? You know, it's going to be a little too late once the structures are already up.
Well, what happens is the structure has to be approved by the.
Historic Board.
The historic board. They have the final say over the design of the structure, not us.
Okay. So what hearing does that happen at?
Regardless, depending what happens here.
Yeah.
If we approve it, they'd have to go for the historic board, and then they'd have to get the approval of the historic board for the design.
Okay.
If we don't approve it, they probably won't go to historic board because it would make a difference where the historic board is.
Okay. So if changes have to be made in future, how would we be notified and how would the public have any kind of weigh in?
They'd have to go back to historic board, and there'd be a public hearing for that as well.
All right. Thank you.
You know, because that's something, concerns that we have, but that was a lot of, I know you were here last time, and I know there was a lot of questions that Mr. Fichette had about the design.
Yes.
I know he spent some time talking about that, how historic board has more say in it than we do.
They've already, I, my understanding is that they've already looked at the, the overall plan of the size and scope.
Mr. Hammer said last time that they were okay with that plan.
Right.
Is what? Am I correct by stating that?
Yes, they were, they were generally agreeable.
Generally agreeable.
Yeah.
So we, yeah, so we feel that the, that the buildings as they stand now, although we generally believe that that it's a lot of building for that size of lot, but generally speaking, we, we feel that the, the changes that have been made make them much more agreeable and much more appropriate to the neighborhood than they were before. So we would really like to see the changes that have been put here to same place. So, and we, and we really appreciate the agreement to not take down those two trees in front. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else?
I have one more, one more question. As far as snow plowing, how, how would you, would you have to take all the, the snow off the property?
I'll let him, Mr. Ham answer those questions. He answered them to us at the last meeting, but I'll let him go over that again.
Sure.
And you probably have something similar to, to the, you know, as far as the downspouts and gutters maybe perhaps, too, because that's, that's huge in our area. You can have a lot of runoff, especially, if you, if you, let's, let's say that you lived in the same area as we did, you'd have probably the same concerns with, you know, destructions going, you know, in your backyard and runoff and where all the water does go, right?
Absolutely. I wish you were here at the last meeting. I don't know if you were or not.
Peter, he filled me in on some, some of the things, but, but yeah, because I'm right, literally downstream, so I've been doing, I recently got laid off, and I've been doing a lot of work in the basement and a lot of, you know, lime, European lime to, you know, fix, fix my basement so more water doesn't come in. So that's why it's, you know, it's key to me. Yeah.
So these drainage areas are going to be utilized for snow storage in here and in here, okay? All the runoff, in the runoff on the moving areas are going to go into subsurface drainage systems, so there's going to be a significant decrease in the runoff that's coming off of the property right now.
When you say subsurface, does that mean just like out, out to the street?
No, there's actually chambers that are going to be beneath the ground that all the runoff's going to go into, so we go into the ground instead of over the surface.
So that'll be in the green, on the grass, under the grass? Okay, I've not heard of that before. Okay.
We're also adding a foundation on the drive here to prevent any further runoff going on to Highland Street. Related to your comment regarding the density, you know, this is a six-unit development in total. The zoning would allow us to do eight if we wanted to, if we wanted to get eight in here, but we're only doing six. So I just let you know that the zoning actually on this parcel could allow eight.
Isn't it, isn't it 95 feet wide on, on the, on the street?
I'm just saying that it's 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and it's 32,000 square feet of land area, so.
Yeah.
And related to your comment about the parking, this development, we have four parking spaces for each unit, each unit, and this building will also have four spaces here. Okay, so we're, normally, there would be 12 spaces required.
Yeah.
This, this development's going to have 20 spaces.
I, when I look at, when I look at it, it's, in theory, it sounds fantastic, but once you add snow and then you think about how the cars can actually back up, because look at how, look at how narrow the driveway is on the right. When the cars are backing up, it's difficult to see the actual traffic patterns within the area, because I'm, I'm only one over, and again, I've lived there a long time. So I, I would, you know, it's just, it's amazing that you can.
We did an analysis utilizing Turning Radio software, and this shows how a fire truck can come into the site. And then, you completely turn around.
That's a fire truck, but not, I'm talking about everyday drivers.
Truck, ambulance truck, Amazon. Truck this truck Amazon truck whatever type of truck which would even be.
And that's with that big tree encroaching on the driveway?
So the so the zoning would require twelve feet wide access drive.
Yeah.
We're proposing fourteen.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is um if we discussed at the prior meeting was the nice thing is here when we were working with the Department of Planning and Development we actually pushed this parking over so you could actually have a car on the side here at least or a car coming up the drive they could actually pull over here and get out of the way and even work with here.
Yeah.
So we're we've been working with uh the engineering department the sewer department uh the Department of Planning and Development concerned at the last meeting incorporating those all into this and we're working on the architectural style as well and on the lighting question for the Hermers if you know they're gonna be downward facing lighting on the entrances to the garages um this plan does show a blue snap light here which is downward facing um that would be the only exterior lighting that there would be I think there'd be some recessed lighting underneath the entrance the rear entranceway there but it'll be I don't think it's gonna shed lumens into your property from it's in fact I know they would be low voltage.
That's interesting I mean it's all interesting stuff I just wish that every all the approvers here if they do approve I wish they would come over and actually walk the property and actually see how involved it is right now just to drive into the the current two family and how narrow it is and then to add the extra not one not two but not three but actually four more units on top of the two units that were there because you know the the old property owners there you know it was just a you know a two couples that lived there and it was really nice and there was plenty of room when you add you know potentially families you're gonna have it's it's just gonna be um it's gonna be very different again I I don't live in a lot I live in Northborough with a lot more land but when you try to um you know really pack these uh these units in like you're doing here it's uh it's it's not good it's not good for the neighborhood in a lot of in a lot of ways.
So also related to Mrs. Herman's comment related to the you know whether this project would get built in the end so the project can't get built unless the developer builds the drawings that are approved and there'll also be a um condominium association that'll ensure that no one can do anything outside of the buildings to alter the buildings in any way either.
How many trees have to come down in the backyard all of them?
Sir could you just get the microphone you wanna speak please I'm sorry.
Yeah yeah no I was just I was wondering we were talking about the um the one tree in the front the very historic tree which I I didn't realize is a special kind of an oak tree probably more than two hundred years old but there's a lot of trees in the backyard and I'm just um I'm I'm just wondering you know on you know how many of them have to come down because you're talking about quite a bit of uh real estate going back there.
There are a few trees that'll have to come down I know that there's a grapevine arbor in the back that's gonna come down uh there's a few ornamental trees in the backyard that will come down.
Did you plot them out or that's just those are just uh?
I just know that they're there it's it's mostly open in the back honestly um there's there's trees along the property lines that'll remain but the um it's mostly ornamental trees in the center of the property and some of those we are leaving especially.
Look at this location here.
Mm-hmm.
Everything along here is gonna remain everything against the fence here shingling fence there.
Yep.
So we can have anything up in here the A drive that goes into the back as you know the fire pit in the rear.
Is there is there a lot of ledge back there?
There is um some ledge in the test pitting that we did that was um inwards between five and twelve feet deep.
So it's a there's a good chunk of rock.
There's a lot of sandy soils.
Yeah.
So it's very good draining soils we know.
So that's more that's a lot of a lot of extra work and a lot of maybe maybe hitting it with some uh some blasting.
Uh we don't know that for sure.
I think it's the highest part of Highland Street. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Anybody else like to speak we got this budget?
Hi Peter Herman from forty-eight Highland Street and to reiterate what my wife said just wanna thank Frank we had some great discussions. Um I think again just wanna go on the record concerned about the ledge and what you've gotta do to get all of that stuff out. Um and there was some discussion we weren't really sure are the buildings gonna have basements?
Yes they are.
So they are gonna have basements okay. Um and then I don't know so much if this is for you Matt or for the board um I guess one of the other concerns would be um inlet water pressure and we're we're already at a point in our house um where um it's tough for somebody to take a shower at the same time that we're doing a load of wash downstairs so you know with um what's his name Thorn dyke exchange going up and then this going next door just wondering how this how the city takes care of making sure that we don't you know totally lose all of our water pressure.
I kinda guess that I'm a Mac I I I cannot answer that chairman I I do know that the uh you know pressure is based on size of pipe so um you can always increase your water pressure if you wanna put in a larger pipe.
Yeah they they we we did that a number of years ago and they said this one is as big as the apartments you know two doors down and it's doesn't.
We're not gonna pour nearly as much strain on the water pressure out on the road uh just with domestic water.
Right.
Um so.
So how big how big a pipe you're gonna be putting in just out of curiosity?
Um well right now there'll be a two inch pipe that'll come into each building because each building's gonna be sprinklered.
Okay.
So uh they can actually run the sprinkler and the domestic service off of the primary two inch line that comes in but they'll use three hundred gallons a day which is considered the average amount of um water that each for for a three bedroom unit would use um which is a title five estimation. So um but it's gonna be a light use. But I don't we're gonna be um bringing a six inch pipe into our site for the hydrant.
Okay.
So the water pressure will be coming off of that six inch pipe. I don't think that our flow would have any impact on your water pressure.
Okay great and that's all I had thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? At this point in time I'll turn it over to any of the board members have you any questions or concerns?
I have a couple of things.
Here's Mr. Lockhart.
I have a question and a couple of comments. Mark.
Matt.
And this view back of the the unit there are any opportunity as opposed to the the other view here your your landscaping really kinda softens the impact of the visual impact of your unit here is there any opportunity here to introduce more plantings or more?
Absolutely.
You know to try to soften the visual impact of that. I think it might help the overall uh visual impact.
I do know that um typically a condition would be to work with uh DPD on landscaping yeah.
Um I did have a having missed the last meeting but having reviewed all the notes and the video and all that uh there was a a lot of concern about neighborhood character here and neighborhood character and the design of these these and other buildings that go up in an historical district is the jurisdiction of the historic board. I did talk to the administrator Steve Stoll today just to get caught up and make sure I'm on the right page with everybody. He's you guys have had some preliminary talks with him and preliminary is is the word. He expects you to meet with him and Charlie Tenetti the architect for the National Park to really get into the design and review of this and look at it from an historical standpoint so I don't think we're there yet in terms of a design uh that we the historic board can look at and approve or disapprove. There's more work to be done there. Secondly, um we know the historic board is well aware of what is needed in in a neighborhood character evaluation done this many times throughout the city in fact he's given Steve has given you some locations where we've worked um so you can kinda compare those is that correct?
Yes um Frank Gorman uh the Southern End who's also here with us this evening uh went to all of those sites and uh worked with Joel Silverwatch the architect to incorporate some of those elements into a revised design that came before even the one the design that was presented at the last meeting so we've had two meetings with uh Steve Stoll and when we came up with the second reiteration of the the architectural design you know Steve don't mark my words on this but it was essentially okay we're there you get you can now go to planning. So that's when we went to the submitted to the planning department because we were not gonna submit to the planning department till we had some general consensus on the the look and feel of the units.
Now that's important so you understand what the historic board expects to see. Um very important you know we we have jurisdiction over that but we need input from all of the people that are here tonight citizens and I even encourage my colleagues on the planning board to attend the historic board public hearing on this property so that if there's any issues regarding neighborhood character they're gonna be addressed that night. We can make decisions but we can't make them unless we have good feedback from the neighborhood uh and other people that have a concern about this property then we can really uh make a a sound judgment as to neighborhood character and if it's good or bad or whatever. That's all I have Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members have any comments? Mr. Guy?
Yeah I was just looking for uh actual clarification I didn't hear you very well when you were talking about I know the the main concern amongst the neighbors is the runoff you're saying that what you're gonna do with the property will actually reduce the runoff from what as it stands right now with just the historic building and the and the empty land behind correct?
Yes.
Okay all right thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fichette okay.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Um yes the um and I appreciate the the revisions that you've made to the rear of the property but it still gets to um the I think the awkwardness of the process at this point. Uh we're looking at the criteria for site plan review is pretty straightforward and quite frankly uh Matt I think you did a good job explaining you meet the criteria of the zoning is what it what it allows um and in site plan review we're really looking at the technical aspect of how it lays out on the site. Um but then when you look at and and the reason for having the special permit and you're looking for two special permits one for the length of the driveway and then the uh special permit for um adding the units is the whole premise behind that is to uh then for the board making the decision and granting the special permit is taking into consideration um several factors and one of them being neighborhood character and that's where I have a real issue with what we're tasked with um in this process and again coming back to um you know the the litmus test to to really um comply with neighborhood character is is somewhat it's 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 not an easy thing to 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 actually hit because you're really looking to how will how will this protect or enhance the character of the existing neighborhood so enhance it so um and but yet we're we're in a situation where what would really define the character of this development goes before the historic board for approval. So I I'm looking for a couple things to come out of this um separate from this proposal is I really uh would would um I would like to ask my colleagues that we would uh after this request that DPD get perhaps even bring this to the zoning subcommittee. Uh I think we need to have or at least look at best practices across the country when you have a historic board and you have special permits that are granted with neighborhood characters is is a criteria it just it doesn't seem fair for the applicant uh because I think you know uh we're taking our job seriously as far as that criteria uh and when you're talking about increasing density um it's all about the design and yet we're somehow it's a it's a measurement in which we are to vote to allow this to happen but yet we don't have final control over it so there there just seems to be a disconnect there and I have to think there's there's a best practices uh that where we haven't applied here I have to think. Um so having said that I um and and again this is disconcerting with the disconnect I think Mr. Lockhart laid out very nicely you know how this should work and the concerns and then Matt you you kinda give a different picture you've already gotten the nod from Mr. Stoll that you know you've kinda you you're just about conceptually where we wanna be to come to us to fine tune it. So I I don't know where it I don't know where it lies. Um but I do know it it creates um uh some discomfort for me in 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 having projects come before us when we have this type of situation. Having said that I mean from the site plan review I think you've uh um you've satisfied the the concerns and the questions that we had. Uh the runoff you have to comply you can't you can't you can't allow the runoff to to um uh go on to the abutting properties and and we're very familiar with the uh with the uh the underground tanks they've actually been using those now for I don't know Matt probably seventeen years or fifteen I think somewhere I've seen them starting coming for the the boards uh before I was even serving on this board. And um and actually walking that site I was very surprised at how much impervious surface there is on that site. I suspect the runoff will improve uh even though you're adding impervious surface based on the drainage system that's currently not there and so from that perspective um again I think you've you've met that I think you've you've the the fire department was happy with uh with what you're proposing those buildings will be sprinkled in the in the back um plus you did do the turning movements for the fire engines. Uh I I think meeting with the neighbors and and agreeing to to maintain those mature trees on the on the boundary is important. Um in my notes as all this was going on and Matt you just quoted I mean I would be looking obviously for DPD again once again for neighborhood character the the landscaping is important I really would look for a landscaping plan but I understand with the whole idea of the look of it comes the landscape as well so I I think that's gonna be uh something that obviously if there's uh staff has issues we'll put it in a way that it'll have to come back before us for final approval uh if there's any issues but obviously that goes a long way. Um the lighting and you you that is part of our process in site plan review to make sure that the lighting does not um encroach on neighboring properties and of course they you are looking at the downward facing lighting. So from that perspective uh I think I'm fine with that I think you've demonstrated uh from the from the special permit for the the length of the driveway um and the way it's configured somehow I I think we it's been implied even to the last meeting that people would be backing out of this driveway in every which way it's designed so that you can pull straight out and 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 go forward right out of the driveway so um and so I'm 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 okay with that. Um I just I I have a real issue with uh with what we're tasked with um in in making a decision on the special permit based on twelve point one uh where we don't have the final uh the final jurisdiction on the on the look of the building so. of the building. So that, from that perspective, I do have issues with that, with that special permit that we sit. But obviously, the process right now is that you come before us and then you go before the Historic Board. But I would be really looking for some clarification for best practices. I also would be looking as a condition that we would, that we would submit a letter on behalf of the planning board, ask DPD to submit a letter on behalf of the planning board on the importance of the cohesiveness appearance of this estate. And I think that that's, at least from my perspective, that's important. I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I do think that that's, if it was before us to make that final decision, that's what I would be pushing for. So I may accept Mr. Lockhart's invitation to appear at the meeting, but we'll see how that goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Tessie, any questions?
Yes, I think Mr. Froschette expressed a lot of my concerns and, you know, all, you know, this project meets almost, if not all, of the technical zoning requirements and those elements. But that being said, I'm still not happy with the density. But given the fact that the technical aspects are being met, you know, with, regardless of that concern, I believe I will support the project. However, I agree with Mr. Froschette that I would like to very much encourage the Historical Board through its chairman, who is also our representative on that board, to look closely at the design and make sure that it meets neighborhood character to the maximum extent that it could.
My comments are, when we look at the neighborhood character as the planning board for the special permit, I think we have to address the architectural renderings that are submitted to us tonight. So I think we do have a say in the matter. So if we don't think that this fits in that neighborhood under the special permit for neighborhood character as those architectural designs that were before us this evening, then we have every right for jurisdiction to vote against it for not neighborhood character. I know they go to Historic Board after if they get to move there, but when they show us a design like that, we have to decide if it fits in the neighborhood for special character and then for the neighborhood character. So I mean, under that special permit requirement, that's what we have to accept. We can just say, we like it, we don't like it, and vote for it or vote against it. But if they go to Historic Board, if we don't approve it, then we'll get to the Historic Board. If we do approve it and they want to change it and we make an approval like that, they will have to come back in front of us.
Chairman?
Yep.
I was wondering if we could, as a condition, just, I'm just throwing this out there, that we would go to Historic and then come back before planning to review the architectural elements that are discussed at, or approved at the Historic. Because one thing that I did do is, you know, I did have a discussion with Steve Stoll about the neighborhood character and the design aspects of the project. And I, you know, I didn't know if it was prudent for us to have gone to Historic first to get a permit relative to the look of the building, but it's also related to how the site's laid out too, right? So we're caught in a dilemma there. So, you know, it could be that the board doesn't have to definitively approve the design this evening and that we could come back before the planning board to discuss, you know, what Historic wants, because I'm bound by what Historic wants for the look and feel of the project and that I would assume would be that same neighborhood character that they're looking for relative to the Historic approval.
Well, I don't know exactly what the criteria is that falls into a special permit for neighborhood character of Historic Board. It's been a few years since I've been on the Historic Board, but I definitely know what's on for that, what falls under our site plan requirement and special permit. So I mean, even if that goes and gets approved at the Historic Board as is, if it comes back before us and the board here feels that Stoll does not meet with the neighborhood character, even though it has Historic Board approval, we could just say Historic Board approved it, but we don't think it meets the neighborhood and we can still vote no. But we still have a say one way or another because this is definitely for neighborhood character for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, just for clarification for myself as well? I guess the, in the negative, that would, that would work, but let's just say in reverse, if we liked what we saw here and we approved it here this evening based on neighborhood character and it goes back to Historic and Historic changes that complete look, you know, it's, how binding is it? And I guess that's where I'm looking for some real clarification on this process.
My opinion is they have to come back to us for the modification. They just can't totally disregard what we say. If they approve something that we've already approved with two special permits and a site plan and Historic Board says, no, we want it this way, then if they change those plans, they have to come back before us for approval.
I should go to...
Am I correct in that? Well, the chairman of the planning board here and the chairman of the Historic Board.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe they should have gone to the Historic Board.
Would it be one of these cases, Mr. Chairman? Would it, and again, it's a difficult criteria. Is, does it, is it considered material or substantial or is it, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, if they come back with a small design, then we'd make the determination whether it was substantial material. If it was a large design, then we could have a public hearing on it and then we get the neighborhood input. If it's, if it's a minor modification, come back before the planning board, they don't need a public hearing. If it's, if the board feels, for example, if the board approved it, goes to Historic and they change it and they come back, if we feel it's a minor modification, the applicant come in and asks for minor modification change. The board agrees, we accept the minor modification and the project moves forward. If we don't think it's a substantial, if it's, we don't think it's a, a minor modification, we can say, okay, we'll put it off a public hearing, bring all the plans back in, and let's have the public input. So I think the first thing, we have to decide this special, is neighborhood character. We have neighbors that live in that neighborhood who have testified to what they feel whether that fits into their neighborhood character. We have people who testified at the last public hearing as well that we have to consider. And then we look at the two special permits as well. One's for the units and one's for the length of the drive. I mean, so in the past, sometimes you can get approval under site plan review, but we've had places where they've got approval of a site plan review, but then they didn't pass, didn't meet the criteria for the approval of one or two with a special permit. So the burden on us is to decide their neighborhood character. So I don't, whatever the board wants to do, if they want to go to Historic and come back, I don't have a problem with that. If the board wants to vote on it tonight, I personally don't have a problem with that. Whatever the board consensus on, we're more than happy to listen to and whatever the board wants to do. I mean, does it all just come down to the design of the project or the board members have other questions, questions on the special permit? Does it come down to the special permit? Say, for example, if we don't like the length of the drive, I don't think, and we vote no against that, I don't think it's going to matter what the look of the houses are.
I think...
One second, sir. You know, I mean, so, and I'm sure that determination would help the applicant as well. Because they say, okay, that's the one asset, but now they need the special permit, I mean, for the unit as well as the neighborhood character. I mean, do we feel that fits in the neighborhood compared to what's on that street now, how it sets back with the different units? That's neighborhood character question. Yes, Mr. Gorman, you have a question? If you come to the microphone, please. Just take your name, please.
Mr. Chairman, Frank Gorman, Southern End Realty. When we started on this project about a year ago, we did take a good look at the neighborhood and what was going on with the Thondike development and all the improvements in the neighborhood. I just, if you have walked the property, like I believe a few you have, when you go in the back, I mean, to the left, you have two 1970-75 brick apartment buildings. To the rear end of the property, you have a garage covered with a top with about 200 tires in it. To the right, which the neighbors who we've met and we saved the trees, added all the extra landscaping, made all the architectural changes that they wanted to see that we had already thought we'd made a lot because we've been in front of your board one time for a preliminary and also in front of Mr. Stoll twice. So this is like three times now. And if there's anything that this board wants or when we go back to the final Historical Board to make it better, we will do that. I mean, that's what we do. We have developed millions and millions of dollars on historical property. We know what the neighbors want, we know what your board wants, we know what the Historical Board wants also. So the cost to do a project like this, when it's sitting here just waiting for site plan review approval, it's very difficult to hire an architect to go ahead and spend thousands and thousands more dollars when you don't even have your site plan approval. And we look forward to going back to the Historic Board, we really, really do, for any input that Mr. Lockhart and your board may have. Because we love doing this stuff and we want to make it for everybody's best. So I appreciate if you would consider the site plan approval or recommendation tonight. And let us move on to the next step, which is equally as important as your decision, the Historic Board for the City of Lowell. Thank you.
You probably don't have a date for Historic Board yet because you have pending what happened.
We don't. So we're going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because the existing building has a non-conforming setback to the, to the front setback. So we're just required to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we would do that next. And then concurrently at the same time, we would do Historic Board.
So if the board feels that they're comfortable with that, with all the special permit, we could, as indicated, we could approve it with, as our architectural renderings. And any changes, they would have to come back before us afterwards. And then we'd have to decide whether that, what type of change that would be. So I mean, if the board feels any more information, they feel that we have all the information retained in the site plan and the two special permits.
I have one more comment.
Come to the microphone, please.
Sure, thank you. Again, this is Scott. I just was, I was just thinking about the street and I was going down the street and, you know, it's the charisma of the neighborhood, it's the, you know, like you're talking about the architecture. If you look at the lots, all the lots going all the way down, starting at McDonough's place, all the way down to the old, the songest building which burned down. And then they, and they, and they did a beautiful job bringing that back to life with the Four family. If, all the lots are 220, except for this one is a little bit deeper, it goes further back. But all of the houses were built between 1858 and 1865. And not one of them has done anything that far in front of the street or close to the street as what's going to possibly be happening here, which it sounds like it's moving along pretty, you know, pretty well. But I just want to bring it to your attention that right now Highland Street is one of those streets, you could actually take a historic walk and you would see nothing but 1858. Mrs. O'Connor passed away, I mean, she just went to the nursing home, but 1858 all the way to 1865. Now what's happened is you're bringing to the forefront, brand new, you know, two-by-six construction. And it may take away from the future, 100 years from now, you can't walk down that street and see nothing but old, old, beautiful mansions. So again, I think that's huge, not even one. Even if, even McDonough's place that he built for his kids is way back at the end of the lot.
Yeah, we know it is. That came before us.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, a lot of questions for us.
I take, you know, I take pride in history.
I'd like to add, Chairman, that Mr. Gorman is fully restoring the existing dwelling. You know, he's fully restoring that existing house. And the entire front of that building along the street scape will essentially remain the same.
I don't think it needed any restoration. I think it's mint the way it was.
Mr. Chairman, just, so I understand then, if we made a condition that the applicant after Historic, after they go before the Historic Board would be required to come back here for final approval?
Yes.
Is that...
We could do that on the, yes.
Yes.
I think we could do it under the site plan, but most importantly, we'd have the teeth in the special permit. I mean, especially for the unit.
Right.
And the drive would be, the driveway doesn't really affect the architectural drawings.
But then, Mr. Chairman, when it comes, if, if in fact it would come back before us, do we then relinqu, then is it just an up or down vote or then do we relinquish any ability to make some changes to what is being presented?
I think we could, we'd have the ability to vote yes or no on the special permit.
It would just, it would be an up or down vote?
Yeah. I mean, unless it was a condition that's amendable to, you know, like any condition with the applicant and what they've come through with the Historic Board.
Right.
So if they said, you know, this is our final plan or this is what's been approved by the, you know, Historic Board and any tweaks that you guys have, we'll consider. And then we'd have to get the back to Historic Board if need be, but if we were satisfied with the final architectural drawings, if this is what it's going to be, and then the special permit for neighborhood character on the amount of units, I think we have a very strong say in the special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Procedurally, might it make more sense, given that the design seems to be among the biggest issue here, that we wait for the Historic Board to make their decision?
Yes.
And then we have in front of us what the quote-unquote "final" design is going to look like?
Sure, we could do that either way, yeah. Either do it tonight conditionally or wait, if, as Matt requested, to come back with the final review. We could do it either way.
Personally, you know, again, that seems to be the whole sticking point here, you know, that we agree with the design and that it meets neighborhood character. As I said before, you know, I have some reservations here and, you know, but I'm not, you know, against, you know, I'm not going to oppose the project at this point, but I would rather see the i's dotted, the t's crossed, and make sure that we're comfortable with it rather than having to kind of backtrack. That would be my recommendation at this point if the applicant is agreeable to do so.
I would agree with that. I think it should go to Historic and the design should be finalized and then come back here. So I mean, you know...
Then somebody want to put that something? I have no problem with that. We'll put that in the form of a motion that, matter to go to Historic Board first for approval, then come back before the planning board.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, are we okay with the timeline here as far as the applicant...
Will that extend your period if you have to come back to Historic Board?
Uh, sure.
You can submit that to us tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. Do you know how long it will be before they get before the Historic Board?
Yeah, I don't know. I talked to him today, but we have a meeting Monday, but that's, that's too soon.
Yes, so...
It'll be the second Monday in March, whatever that date is.
Okay.
Wait a minute. I got it.
So the second Monday in March? Second Monday in March is the 11th, right? Monday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I have it scheduled right here. It is, meeting date is March 11th. That would be the one. It's the middle deadline, Mark, is February 27th.
So our next meeting would be March 18th. That'd be the week after the Historic Board meeting.
Yeah.
So that give you an efti, Mr. Himmer, or do you want more than a week after Historic Board?
No, because essentially we'd just be coming in with the Historic Board approval in those renderings. I guess my concern is, is that we really need, I mean, at this point right now, we're not sure what from the board exactly you're looking for in terms of something that would be approvable for a neighborhood enhancement, you know, because we do have a neighborhood meeting we had two weeks ago. Mr. Gorman, Mr. Gorman does make an interesting point. We have a three-story apartment building next to this site. And, you know, is it, I haven't specifically heard a, an architectural element that this is missing from any of the board members, be it, you know, you don't like the gable ends, you don't like the garage, it's just something specific. Because my fear is, is that we go to Historic, they want something very specific, and then we come back to this board here and we're like, well, that's not what we're looking for. And I honestly don't know exactly what the board's looking for. And I don't mean to... be, you know, difficult in the way that I'm saying that. I'm just saying that, you know, we're, we're almost going to the historic board, not even being able to articulate to the historic board what the planning board's looking for, other than, you know, speculation. Because I don't, I haven't heard a specific comment about, you know, whether you want, you know, maybe some false shutters on the side of the window casements, different types of doors, wooden doors, whether you want a, a two-and-a-half-story building, more in line with what's on the streetscape, which is, this is a two-and-a-half to some degree, with the dormers up in the, on the story above the second story. We've been incorporating the widow's walk, which is indicative of McDonough Building. We've took concerns related to, you know, carriage house elements, where if you look at those garage doors, I believe that those do have carriage house elements added to those garage doors. We've added elements related to goose neck lighting, which is indicative of a, of a barn or a carriage house entranceway. So we're trying to, you know, I think you can see that we're trying the best we can to incorporate, or, you know, in some ways, guess what you folks are looking for in terms of neighborhood character. But nobody has said, well, I don't like the, the doghouse dormers on the top of the building, or I don't like the widow's walk, that's not what we're looking for. But if we could get some input, would be really helpful. I think that would give us some guidance, so that we can, because we just want to have a project that the city wants. We've been having multiple meetings with all the different departments within the city, in this board, for our third, if I'm not mistaken, our third meeting here. And I'm just, you know, we just want to add architectural elements that the board wants. We added some overhangs above the garage doors, which I think is a carriage house element. And I think we're getting to a better design. I just don't, my fear is, is that we go to historic, they say they love this design, and then we come back before you, and you're like, well, this is a design we're not going to approve.
Mark, I don't think those specifics, those architectural enhancements, will come from the historic board. Will come from, like a Charlie Tenetti, an architect.
Right, exactly, sure.
Not from here. I think, you know, Jerry, what was the word you used, the cohesiveness of the whole project?
Yes, yes.
We want this to blend together. We want the new construction to blend into the old as best it can. And I don't think we can go beyond that here, but to say that, and that includes landscaping, too. Just make it all work together.
Sure.
And those specifics will come from the historic board.
Okay.
That's where I'm coming from.
I, I guess what I, what I would probably then, if, looking even if we could, even in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, is that we would even submit a letter to the historic board, it, with the, exactly that, that the, the planning board in, in, determining neighborhood character, is urging the historic board to take into consideration the architectural elements that create a cohesiveness of the, of the development. And I think, as, as well as the landscaping. Again, when we start talking density, design over density, I think the design and the landscaping will go a long way with that project. So, but I, I guess, Matt, you know, to your point, you're talking about all the elements, but oddly enough, in those structures, it still doesn't come off as a carriage house that complements. And I understand, because I know the historic board is, you can't re, they don't want to recreate maybe something that wasn't part of the building. But it, it's, the elements are there, but it's still, you don't look at that and go, oh, that looks like a carriage house back there. It, it just doesn't give you that, that feel. From my perspective, as how it would complement that. And, and I'll reiterate this, because I went through this in, in other sections of the, of the city. The techables particularly have had developers come and point to Camelot Court, or West, you know, Westminster Apartments, to go, oh, that's the character of the neighborhood. Well, you know, that is, and I, I said it last time, I mean, it really is, that's an oddity, that, 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 that built right there. That does not define that, that street. It really does not. It's, it's, it's there. But when you look at the predominant design of, of, of the homes that are there, and even the home with the top paper on the, on the roof, I have it here. Actually, there's some nice architectural elements on that roofline that, that are here. And it's got a large cupola on there, and it looks like a, almost looks like a barn attached to it. I mean, that's, that's a significant structure. I mean, I, you just, you can see it back there.
Yep.
So, I, I'm, that's, from, from me personally, if you're asking, that's from...
I think the letter would help, from the board to the historic commission.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you know.
I mean, I understand, that's, to me, that's, that's where there's, it's still a, there's got to be...
Communication would emphasize that, that's fine.
We're, we're not architects here.
Right.
None of us. We, you know, I would trust the expertise of the NPS architect, and, you know, historic, you know, board, to make some of those determinations, and hopefully bring back something that will address all of those issues.
As chairman of the historic board, I would certainly make sure that message gets across the, all the, the board.
Excuse me, you have a question?
Well, yeah, I just had some input. I'm certainly not an architect, but I have an art degree. And I can tell you that maybe, you know, one of the things that strikes me, and I really appreciate really what Mr. Gorman and his team here are trying to do, to make these more appealing. I think the basic issue that I struggle with, as far as visual appeal, is that the overall design includes peaks, and that is the basic problem. And you can put architectural elements onto a building to make it look more appealing, and fit in sills on windows, proportions of windows, et cetera, et cetera. But you'll never get past that look. There are peaks on those buildings, and there are no peaks anywhere in any building on the street. There are none. And that's what is the jarring note. So it's kind of like, you know, a recipe that you want to put salternas in it, or you want to put nuts in it. You can do things to enhance the recipe, but it, you know, you're never going to turn a bread recipe into a cake, you know, once you've got, and really, I mean, if you want something that fits, you take the look at the front of this building, and every single building on our street has got this square appearance. Even ours with a mansard has got the flat roof. It's just, there's no peaks anywhere. So as soon as you put peaks on buildings, and it's not, it's going to stand out like a sore thumb. So even two that look like this, back there, would be brilliant. Why they, that, something like that wasn't considered in the first place, I don't know. Mary O'Connor's building has got some faux windows, but basically, it's almost this exact structure. Our building, except for the mansard, is basically this exact structure. You couldn't go real far wrong with something that looked quite a bit like this. I don't know if that's doable at this point. You know, they've already gone pretty far with this interior design and everything, with basements that go with this, and the whole nine yards. But that's, that's kind of the jarring element here. And I really appreciate that they had, they put a lot of work into it. I think it, I think they look better than they did before. I really appreciate all the details. They've, they've changed the, the proportion of the windows are very key to, to historic architecture, even little things like having sills on the windows, and shutters, and things like that. But the fact that they've got all those peaks and dormers is actually countering everything that's going on in our neighborhood. If there's some way to, I mean, this looks more like a carriage house than what those do, actually. But, so I don't know if there'd be possible to even take that similar kind of footprint, a similar kind of design. I mean, they already know what they want as far as bedrooms and bathrooms, et cetera, and put it into something that's a little more square, or take the peaks off somehow, you know. It wouldn't, it wouldn't stand out at all if you put two more of these back there, in proportion, you know, in proportion, scaled down. Or something with, even, actually, something like this with like, I don't know, I've seen some pretty ugly faux mansards. So I don't really want to say a faux, faux mansard, because that scares me. And, and they've done a lot of work on these, and these are better, quite honestly, than I've seen a lot put in fill projects. But I think that that, just from my own experience, my own observation, is that's the jarring element. And I don't, I think it's tough to get past that, no matter what you, what you plaster on the front. And I really, I think that some of these, the design changes that they've made, I really appreciate that. I think it goes a long way to making it more historic, for sure. But I don't know what we can do about those peaks. They'll, they're the issue, really, as far as, as far as cohesiveness in, in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any board members have a further discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to thank Mrs. Herbert for articulating some of the thoughts that we weren't quite expressing as well as she did. So thank you very much for that.
That's the motion. I got a motion.
Well, I think we have a motion that was made, and second to continue the matter to March 18th meeting. I know you had a question. I'd ask you, ma'am, if that date would be appropriate, or do you need more time?
Um, why don't we put it for the 18th?
March 18th?
Yeah, if we have to go to the next one, we'll make a request to go, continue that 18th meeting, go to the next one. But we'll put it on for the 18th.
All right.
So.
The 11th.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second for the March 18th?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And, you know, on that date, if you want to give us a little bit more of what the landscape plan will have, then we should have every question in front of us, which should be...
That should include.
Yeah. Will they do the landscaping in front of you as well, historic board, or just the building? If not, they can...
Well, I think in this case, we'd want to look at the whole thing, and, you know...
Mr. Chairman, can we, I don't know, Jared, does that need to be in the form of a vote for the planning board to issue correspondence to the historic board?
If you'd like to take a vote, then I'm sure it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion that the DPD submit a letter on behalf of the planning board, to the historic board, requesting that they strongly take into account the cohesiveness of the estate, as we, in order for us to determine the neighborhood character in, in a review of the applicant's application. And I think that's captures what we're trying to accomplish.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. And moving along on the agenda, we have, under other business, we have one, and then we have 5.7, I mean, 1, 5, and 7 East Merrimack Street, which is in for minor modification. The proponent is, the proponent is requesting a minor modification to the previously approved mixed-use building. The proposed change includes reducing the height of the building from 12 to 5 stories, the number of the dwelling unit from 66 to 42, and the size of the restaurant from 4,270 square feet to 915 square feet. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, again, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell. Here... Spring's coming.
Yes, it is.
I'm here, I'm here this evening representing One Riverfront LLC. We're here for a minor modification request for the previously approved project at 1 East Merrimack Street, which is also 1 comma 5 dash 7 East Merrimack Street, for a minor modification from the original approval. This modification specifically is to reduce the, the scale of the original project, which was a 12-story building and 66-unit residential commercial building, to reduce that to a 5-story, 42-unit residential commercial building, mixed-use. The, the commercial element in this case is going to be a coffee shop on the ground floor. And additionally, this evening, we're requesting an extension for a two-year period as well for the permit, the special permit. One Riverfront LLC has got a plan that, that they're confident about. They're confident in starting construction this year, and looking forward to working with the department heads to resolve drainage, and sewer, and water, and grading, and things of those, things of that nature, which was a part of the original approval. So that being said, I'll put it forward to the board. I have an architectural elevation that was done by Gavin and Sullivan Architects in Lowell for the 5-story building. And then in your packets are additional elevations, some interior designs. And this building's also going to incorporate a, a green space on the roof, which will be new for the city. There'll be some quality green space on the roof of this building with walkways and patios, which is shown on sheet two of your plans.
Matt, can you put that one back up again? I'm sorry.
Yeah. There's going to be a plaza around front here, right outside the coffee shop, which will be located on the front lawn, facing East Merrimack.
So you said, you showed a picture of the bottom left-hand side?
That's the roof.
Okay.
Yep.
Look at it quickly. It looks like the walkway to Middlesex Community College.
Yeah, 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 totally.
And we're, you know, hired is up in relationships.
Yeah, I'm like saying, it looks like it's on the ground floor.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an ambitious proposal. And, you know, he's committed to creating, basically, he's committed to creating quality outdoor space.
Yeah. And we know he's a big, he's big for the green space, too, green buildings and everything else.
Yeah, that's what I do.
Yep. We know he's very positive on that. So, and, yeah, just go, go through the other two. Let me, the ones on the right, the, the bottom, yeah.
So, this is, as you look from East Merrimack.
Okay.
Over here, this is the coffee shop here with the plaza around.
Okay, okay.
Residential units.
Mm-hmm.
Facing East Merrimack, there's some generalized concept of being here, being very high-end.
Matt, the only quick question I had was when I saw the comment from Jared was on the very back page. Water utility still had a question.
There's a question related.
Everything looked good, it's like on the last page. Thank you. That's actually an ongoing issue. Not, no, it's going to be resolved quite easily. David Daley, the Daley Group applicant. When we went to demolish the building, raise the building, we had to go before, we had to get an agreement with the city. And so one of the, part of the, I was going back and forth with the legal department, and I had offered up the fact that I agreed with cutting all water going to our building, but I wanted to make it clear that it was only water that's proprietary to our building. The water department wanted us to cut a number of different old services that didn't go to our building. Unfortunately, I had sent that over that day, that request. The water, the city voted on it then, the city council voted on it that night, so it didn't get incorporated into the agreement. So we were forced to go out into the street and cut a number of different services. Unfortunately, we got there, I had, I had, our excavation company, we had to hire us a third party to do this work, cost, I think it was about $14,000 or $15,000. And we opened up two or three of the locations that the water department said there were water lines there, and two of the water lines didn't exist. So we had to fill it back in at a significant cost. So at the time, we worked with the city, I had a, we had a meeting, we took pictures of everything showing that, I had made it clear that we didn't want to open up streets to other water services that we didn't know even existed. So again, we got down there and found out they didn't, it hadn't even been capped years ago. They, so the problem is the city, the water, you know, this, this situation was worked out, was being worked out with the previous city manager, Mr. Murphy, and we had a pretty good agreement, and, and then he left. So we, we, we're going to engage the new city manager, hopefully in the next couple of days to, either way, it's going to be worked out. It's not, it's not a really a huge deal. We'll, we'll make it happen if we have to, but we're willing to work with the city on that.
Any board members have any questions? That's the only comment I had. I thought staff did excellent job on the comment.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I do have a comment, I think, of what we have now is, is on a better scale to the, to the area, it really fits better and looks, looks nicer.
Thank you. I think it's going to be, it's, it's an easier, as we noted, and the, the way we're going to construct this is a more podium-style construction. So we'll do a steel first floor and then a wood frame. And we're going to incorporate a panelized system into the construction, so we're going to have this thing weather tight, hopefully, in, in 60 to 90 days. Most of, most of, at this, the way we're looking at our engineering right now is about 60, 60 days right now to panelize this thing and have it weather tight, so. And it's going to obviously speed up construction, which, in that area, in downtown, with everything going on, it's expediting any type of construction down there is, is good for everyone.
Mr. Daley, to that point, I'm sorry, regarding the letter from January 28th, DPD, from the comments from the building department, comments about the type of construction and what's?
Yeah, there was something about that. Yes. He, it was he, which, which comment?
Yeah, it said, "The, the roof plan appears to propose an occupied roof. The applicant also appears to have significantly reduced the original proposed height of the building. A design solution builders have recently begun submitting for residential structure of this height are proposed structures using combustible construction materials." This is to say wood framing rather than steel. "While this structure appears to be just under the maximum height for a true high-rise requiring non-combustible materials, an occupied roof classified as assembly 50-plus persons is not permitted over combustible construction materials invoking podium construction may not resolve this issue. The applicant should be advised that, in my opinion, the design is feasible only if the construction type is type 1A/B, fully non-combustible, if large rooftop occupancy is desired."
It's a good point. So he, basically, he notes the fact that that living, he defines that as living area up there on the, on the rooftop. We look at that differently. Our architect is currently on vacation, so I, if you would, and we're having, we look forward to having ongoing conversations to resolve that comment. And if it's true, we will not put any quote-unquote living, it's not living area, it's more of a patio or a grill and green space. So I guess it's based on the, how he defines it versus what we defined it as. There's not going to be any living area up there, it's just going to be a, like I said, again, a, a meeting area or a hangout area on top of a roof and some green area, which is, I think would be really great in that, in that spot. So he's on vacation, we'll continue discussions with the building department, and you can condition it the fact that, you know, we resolved that issue based on, during the permitting phase.
Because that would, that would determine whether or not you have the rooftop gardens up there.
Correct. Correct.
And they are, it's, if you've ever been to the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston building, I think it's on the 12th floor, whatever, they have picnic tables and trees and shrubs, and it's pretty wild.
It's nice.
You sit out there.
Yeah.
So it, it's a, it's a nice element, that's for sure. Okay, thank you.
Any board members have any comments?
All unanswered.
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman, can I just comment just a little bit here? Because I know we're looking to make a determination of whether it's a substantial material change. And, and on the surface, I, you know, I looked at this, and obviously, going from a, the height of the building, 12 stories down to five, and actually reducing some of the footprint, I guess, in and of itself, on the surface, obviously, is, is feeling substantial. However, I, I was just, and I, and I've looked at some guidance that's out there in, in determining that, and I guess I just wanted to put it in perspective, at least from, from how I'm looking at this. But there are some, there are some points here, and there are some actually communities across the country that have actually put together some guidance as to, for process on making that determination. And I just want to go through this a little bit and reasoning here is, "Does the proposed deviation from approved plans represent a change in any aspect of the project's original approval that was considered essential to the project's overall design, quality, safety, or function?" And again, I think that's, you're still meeting the, what was, what was presented. "If the project had originally been proposed in a manner now proposed, would the approving body have been able to make the findings that the project would meet the applicable standards of the review?" And again, it's, your, your demand is even less than, than
Correct.
what you had put before us. "Does the proposed deviation from approval plans meet the applicable city regulations?" And again, under the zoning, it did. And you're, and again, it's, it's a less of a requirement. "Would the proposed deviation from approved plans represent an upgrade in overall design, features, or materials, and will it improve upon the project's compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood?" And I think Mr. Lockhart even alluded to that, that it actually, as grand as the 12 stories seemed, and certainly, from a headline perspective, it was exciting to look at.
Yeah.
I think when you really kind of look at it, it's probably going to fit in a little bit better
Yes.
in that location. And "Does the, does the proposed deviation from approved plans involve a change to an aspect of the project that during the original hearing was identified by a member of the public or acknowledged by the approving body to be particular importance?" I don't think there's anything that you're taking away that we thought was critical to the, to the, to the, to the project. So again, I just, on the surface, looking at the, the agenda and looking at it under a minor change, and I think anybody just looking at that
Yeah.
what are you talking about?
Right.
But look, putting it in the context of, based on the original approval, and what does that do? You know? And it actually gives examples. And, and, you know, substantial conformance would be, one of them would be decrease in the height, or interior modification that would not add any floor area to the structure, actually reducing
Reducing.
Minor change in the size of installation point of windows and doors. So, and then major would be obviously items such as increase in the height of the building. And we've had that happen to us where somebody's come to us and we've required that it go to a public hearing, because when the public was here, they walked away and it was approved at a certain height, and all of a sudden, it's going to be a lot higher. So I guess I just wanted to put some perspective on that.
That's good. No, I appreciate that.
If anybody looks at that, would, would wonder how you would come to this conclusion. And I'm assuming the agreement you had with the parking department, I know it was for originally 68 spots, have you renegotiated?
Yes. Part of the other conversation we'll have with the city administration as well, too. Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion that this is not a substantial and material change, that it is a minor modification.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With a new condition to be added is to, as Mr. Daley informed, that he work with the building department to work out what is committed for over the combustible construction material, and both in the podium construction may not resolve this issue, what you talked about on the rooftop, if they can work with the parking, I mean, assuming the building department, resolve that issue.
Absolutely.
And then, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, is all of the original conditions stay with the project?
Correct.
Which is important.
Yeah, because as, as Shep was saying, you know, I feel some minor change due to the fact, you know, that has indicated you're downsizing it and not increasing it. And as you know, what the other things we always look at is open space, parking, traffic, and I think that addresses all of, all of these matters as a minor matter. Yeah, so this, basically, the only condition I put on
Excuse me.
to conform with the building department request for the rooftop. So I'll make that a condition for, as an approval. We have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Guy. Okay. So a motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the last motion I will make is that I will allow the request to extend the, for a two-year period to do the construction of the project. Motion seconded by Mr. Snizki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I chair both chairs. Wish you well.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Been by there a couple of times, listen, we're going to be seeing something on this soon.
It's the most asked question I get in the city, I can tell you that.
Sure you do.
I'm just as anxious as everyone else.
I see only your car parked, I know something's up.
We were ready.
Especially with all the stuff going on at the auditorium lately, you know?
Yeah.
It's fight time.
It'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're driving by, driving by, you're like, oh, it's not over here.
Well, thank you.
Well, good luck.
Thanks.
Wish you well with the project. Moving along in the agenda, does any of the planning board members, excuse me, any of the planning board members have any further comment?
Yes, I have an historic board report. Our next meeting is March 11th, as we discussed, of the previous project, but we had a really good tour of Fondaik Factory Outlet Development, the Salapoli project, and it's really coming along nicely. There were a few questions about some of the materials they were using that we wanted to clarify. For instance, as you pull down to the terminal area, on the left, there's going to be an outside patio, and they just kind of went ahead and used granite block in the construction of the patio, and they were supposed to use brick, but it's not a major issue. That's why we were there. The interior, we toured where the restaurant will go on the first floor, and some of the residential units above. That really is nice. It's coming along very nicely, and some enhancements in there that are being made that'll really make it a good, quality project. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as mentioned earlier, though, I, I know for my own peace of mind, if we could take a vote requesting DPD, at least, look at best practices. I mean, the whole idea is for us to work in, in harmony, and really for the best result for the applicant in trying to navigate through these situations. When we're looking at historic board approval and, and special permit requests, if we could at least, I would like to request in the form of a motion that DPD look to provide best practices that perhaps we can incorporate into the process.
Can I, can we discuss that a little bit?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I certainly agree with the best practice approach. It's always enlightening to see how others do things. But in my conversation with Steve today, he mentioned, he says, you know, we really got to look at these projects and, you know, some of these projects, they should go to the historic board first, and then here. And I think we witnessed that tonight, and if there's a way that we can evaluate that type of project and direct it in, in that direction, I mean, it's crazy. We can incorporate some kind of procedural change to evaluate things upfront as to where they should go for hearing.
Yeah, I would like to see that. That's been the, that's been what I've not been happy with all along.
Yeah, I mean, what the heck?
Okay. Good. Oh, I guess it's.
Well, the motions are made, we have discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion from board members?
No, I have none.
Any comments from staff? An interesting motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Fischel. Good night, and thank you, everyone. And congratulations to the New England Patriots, Super Bowl champs, again.
Hey, hey, go.